Disaster planning, emergency sirens, and housing. Start reading this. I think there's an even dirt, Bloemfield County Council President liked it. And also we were receiving assistance through the owner of the town housing. Filletation programs that the county has been awarded. Does housing and property adventure since this time I'd like to public to recall. But my responsibility is to function in regards to the town of Bloomfield. O O R program from this point on and I will sustain from all matters regarding the O O R program.
Finally, yeah, my only question for you would be, do you need to abstain from the? Any questions about this program or just what has to do with you?
Uh, sure. I, I think I was told from any voting, who we would pick as a town. And who goes into the houses and does the work. I haven't got that information yet, so. You don't have to sign some things.
Well, I mean, do we even get it? Do we get a choice for that or?
I think they have, they have a draw of the pot of people and then we go through.
I think we had to, I think we had to actually approve.
Okay.
Which the list is always pretty slim as far as numbers.
I want to add that.
Well, I just, just a question.
I had to add, I had to question this after Jenny had gotten sixteen and she just liked to have two more. Then I followed suit with it. It wasn't something I just went out and, oh yeah, I'm gonna jump on board. No, that wasn't it. I wanna make sure everybody else got up first in this, so.
Yeah, she did get her quota though. She did get the eighteen homes that she needed.
Okay.
Good.
So someone else must have came in.
So she didn't get the last one, then?
Yeah.
That's for my, and boy, it's a good program. It benefits the citizens of Bloomfield and it benefits you as well as, and you meet the specification of that.
How many programs, no matter what politicians say, are true?
Yes, that's right.
Now, I believe this, this is one.
Yes. That's great. Okay. All right, well, we'll move on now if it is out, if there's any else on that, right? Okay. Emergency sirens. I'm gonna say sirens, but. And I'll let John take it from here a little bit. He's on it.
Okay, uh, thank you. I've, uh, presented previously and we wanted to, uh, presented a proposal on coming up with a plan to test, to do a test of our sirens. And so I presented one to the council and as to the market board as well. And, and so during, and Kenny, you came back and said that, uh, there is a process in place and there's some paperwork and things that you guys already do. And you showed me some and I felt like before I, I went forward with this, I wanted to give you a chance to present what, what you say is already in place, is already doing. So that we can make a educated decision as to whether we need to change anything or are we okay with the way things gone? But having said that, I know the last time that the national testing was scheduled for eleven o'clock in March, whenever that time came, that siren, our sirens didn't go off. I'm not saying they didn't, they were, uh, they were broke or whatever, but for some reason they didn't go off and so.
They, they didn't go off because Sheriff's Department failed to update their system. And we had already pre-arranged with Sheriff's Department to let them test our systems. County, county wide, didn't set off any of them. So after they didn't set off, I set them off, um, from either my bed or town hall, but they were set off like eleven oh three. They was three minutes late, but we had a timeframe that it was to be set off between eleven one and fifteen. Those are, that was the timeframe that, that the Weather Service or whoever come up with it, Homeland Security, whoever, whoever done this. But they did go off. Since then, the, the Sheriff's Department has updated their system, you know? It, it was a firmware update or something in the radio package. So they can set off the sirens. You know, I talked about it, about doing a silent test or something like that, or having them do an audible test. They cannot do an audible test. The only, the only option that they have is, is live warnings. So the, the issue that I got with this is when I talked to ECS, our control panel is outdated, so I cannot, they can't, um, program it to set it off like, if you guys say, okay, we want it set off every month at, you know, noon or whatever. Can't do that. And I can't guarantee that I'm gonna have somebody here at noon on whatever day that is. You know, and the console's locked up in our system or in our squadron. So, um, I sent an estimate out to you guys on the upgrade and I, I didn't bring it. But that upgrade, um, can be programmed to set it off automatically, so we don't, you know? So I don't, the police department doesn't have to, um, make sure that we do it, you know, every month or whatever. When I talk to ECS and the company, whoever this company is that does our panel sirens, I think it's, I think it's the same company who does our trucks, you know, our, our equipment for our trucks. They do not recommend live tests. This system that we've got now does a test, um, every week. I can hear it on my radio when it does a silent test. So it checks the modules, the batteries, the boards, everything except spinning up the, the sirens to make an audible test. So it checks all the components of that siren other than the, the whangies or whatever you wanna call them. And I get a report that, you know, it's tested these sirens and I've got a bad one or I need, I've got an issue or something like that. I look at that report, if it's okay, you know, no big deal. If it's not, if it comes back with an error or something, then I call ECS and have it come fix it. Or have them come look at it and see what it is. That's the current system that we.
And we get that now off again?
It's done once a week. Silent tests are done once a week. And we have, we have one issue with it, um, which went off that I, that comes to mind. Which went off that, um, we had low voltage or something. I believe it was on the, the swimming pool siren and we had to buy batteries. And that was a year ago or a couple years ago, something like that. Yeah. So, I mean, it's up to you guys. I don't recommend live tests because people get used to them, you know? They think at two, you know, two o'clock every Monday, it goes off. And if you're having a storm during that time, you know, that's, that's the bad thing. Didn't we, well, I know we did, didn't we chat, think maybe instead of monthly on a live test, quarterly would be?
Yep, we could, we could do it whatever length of time we wanted to. The, uh, this calls to do it a, uh, the first Tuesday of each month right now, the way it is. We could change that to quarterly?
Flinton does quarterly now. Um, he ran in, Paul ran into a problem, I think it was either, I think it was this year, during the National Weather Test, uh, the nationwide. He put out on his social media that they're not gonna conduct the test because it's not within his, because the National Weather Service test was like on a Monday or Tuesday. And his test was due to be on a Wednesday or Thursday. I mean, it was right in there. So he put it out on his social media that they're, you know, they're not gonna participate in the National Weather Service test. They're gonna do, you know, by, by their words, what they've got. So they just disregarded it. And people don't pay attention to that test anyway. You know, it's, it's not, it's not advertised enough, you know? The one thing, if you guys do change this, the one thing you need to, you need to give me the option of setting them off prior to, because it's just like the tornado that hit Flinton. I seen it coming. I was at the house and I called and told them to set them off here just because of the path that it was coming. And Bloomfield wasn't in that tornado watch box. But still, you never know which way it's gonna go, so I told them.
Yeah, 'cause we went to R M C and it started coming this way, then we turned back.
Yeah, so I told them to go ahead and set it off and dispatches like, they said the warning was not for Bloomfield. I said, I don't care if it's for Bloomfield or not, set it off. So they, they set our sirens off and then Jordan, um, kept going, set them off every, every three to five minutes.
Well, this, this, this covers that. The first criteria for the act, for activation is this, uh, following the criteria for siren activation. Issues of a tornado warning by the National Weather Service for Green County and/or Bloomfield. So it doesn't have to be.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
So fits in Green County and, and any of the police department area, one sees a potential tornado coming, that needs to be highlighted. I, I would also mention too that I've talked with the sheriff about this and he is, he strongly supports us doing a, the live, the active, uh, test alarm. I, and I, I have no problem, uh, I would support changing it instead of monthly to quarterly for this. But, and then between, during, uh, between the quarterly active sirens, you all could continue to do your silent alarms, uh, each weekly, just like you're doing now, uh, so that, uh, if something was, was not to be functioning, then you could catch it between, between times. But, uh, but anyway, we could.
I think that's built into that, that control panel. I think that's, I think that's automatic in that control panel.
Okay.
But still, it, it comes up with a manpower issue, you know, even on quarterly. Because what if I'm in court or, you know?
I, I thought you said just if we update your panel, it.
Yeah, unless you guys update. And then the, the update, the way I understood it from ECS, it can be programmed and do whatever. Which, I mean, it needs to be upgraded because this system is still using a dot matrix printer and they went out in the eighties.
There's also a, a form in here to, uh, each time there is a test, it would be recorded. Uh, it'd be a pass fail, uh, the date of the test. And if, if for some reason the test didn't work, uh, then the council, we would need to be notified so that we could, uh, find out what the problem is and approve whatever it needed to be in order to get the sirens operational again. And then whoever is, uh, conducting the test would, uh, would initial, uh, that they've done the test. But I, I'm not sure if you're keeping record now, uh, whenever you do a test?
No, I'm not keeping all those printouts because that would, that would fill a file folder.
And any maintenance that, so this, this would be a quarterly, uh, if we change this to quarterly, this would be just a quarterly, uh, getting the, informing, putting the information on the council. So I think there's like two or three years worth that you could, uh, pending any problems.
Would be for three years and then travel.
Yeah.
So instead of just calling them and having them fix whatever the issue is, come to you first?
Well, if, if it's something we need to know about, if, uh, do we have a maintenance agreement with ECS or how have we been doing that?
Not that I know of. We haven't had much trouble with those sirens at all. The battery issue and then, uh.
That's the only thing I can remember.
Yeah, I got an error code once and, and I called up there and they said, don't worry about it. It's nothing to, nothing to worry about, you know? Uh, but the batteries is the only thing that we could have. Those sirens, how long?
I don't know. I'd say twenty, fifteen, twenty years, fifteen years, something like that.
Yeah, I mean.
Before I was on board, I don't know.
You know, so I just call ECS and get them fixed. I mean, that's.
Well, and.
And I don't know, this, this new board might keep its own records too. You know, you might be able to print out a report on, on, you know?
Yeah.
Pass fail or whatever, 'cause I, I didn't look that far into that. Well, we definitely need, we definitely need to keep documentation of what, and we can, we can put a link after whatever it is. One year, two years, three years, you throw out of here. It's whatever, however it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. If there's ever. So you want me to, if, if we have to replace something on them or whatever, then ECS just gives me a bill and then Sondra can give me a copy of it and I can attach it to the thing? And then this is all I've done on this date? And that's documentation that you found an issue? Yeah. And that is prepared. Okay.
Right.
So, uh, the, uh, this also, it talks here. It says the sirens will be tested by both Green County Dispatch with their equipment and by Bloomfield Police Department. So is that, uh?
Not possible now.
Not possible.
Like I said, the only thing they can do is a live test.
Well, quarterly they would do a live test.
I don't want, I don't want a live test done because a live test says that there's a tornado in the area. When I do a, when I do an audible test, it says that this is a test only. What's the difference? What? That a live test, a live test says that there is a tornado in the area, that there's a tornado warning, what it says. Because it's all.
Whenever you expand something out to the public, it, that.
Yeah, when it's a test only or this is. Cause it talks to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And when you do a live test, it's a live test. And the, the Sheriff's Department does not have the option to do a test on the sirens system. Because when it says, when I, when I do a live test on it, then it says that this is a test only, you know, you're testing the siren system or whatever, whatever it says, whatever it talks to you and says. But there's a differentiation in there and the Sheriff's Department does not have that capability.
Well, we don't wanna, we don't want, if, if they can't do that, we don't want the announcement going out that this is seek shelter immediately in a, you know, middle of whatever day we do it. It's a nice Sunday.
Starting to say February, but that's when it hit our house. Yeah, don't say that.
It could end up happening now, but on a nice day like today and we do, this was test day and it goes off and, you know, we, we can't have that. But so, uh, if, if we can't do that, then we can't do that if the, if the Sheriff's Department can. But I, I, then I go back to, if we could take out Green County Dispatch and just say.
And just do ours, just test our system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it in there and it won't work it out.
Yeah. And if in the future they upgrade their console and they can, they can do a live test, then they can do it. But, but you're, you're missing the point here. If you upgrade this console, it will do it itself. So you're not gonna have a Green County involved in it, you're not gonna have us involved. It's gonna be that console itself that does the test.
You just program it to?
Right, it is programmed to, to do it because it's, you know, it's a manpower issue with me 'cause I can't say that I wanna be here every Monday at noon to set it off.
But that, that's fine in, in my standpoint. You all can do, you're continuing to do your weekly test to ensure that your equipment within your patrol cars are working, that you can set it off, any of you can set it off, uh, with that, and it would work based off the side, the silent test. But once a quarter, uh, we know the siren itself isn't working. That's the thing that we need.
Right, but John, you're not understanding me. On the quarterly test.
Yeah.
Okay? This upgraded console, it will do it itself. It's not us doing it.
Yeah, I, I get that, I.
Okay, so, so the, the Sheriff's Department is not gonna be able to test their equipment. The report is going to say, we done a live test and, you know, it passed or failed or whatever. And the siren worked. But that's not, that's not us setting it off from the, the cars. And that's not us going in and manually setting it off on the, on the console. That's the console doing it itself.
That's if we upgrade.
If you upgrade.
And it probably has somewhere integrated in that system where it could spit out a report.
Surely, surely, that is, that this old system spits out the report, you know? That, that it pulled two sirens and the batteries and voltage was whatever, you know? But it's, it's that, it's that console that's doing that test. Whether it's silent test, live test, whatever.
So what we really need to figure out, maybe a silent is from the car to the.
I believe that I can do a silent test from the car to the sirens on this new system. I can't do it, I don't have that option in the radio.
Just connect it, yes.
Right, right. Yeah, but, you know, I don't, I haven't seen that option in, in our radios. Cause, cause the siren frequencies and stuff are programmed in on the town frequency, on, on our, on our frequency in our radio. And we switch over that and as long as I'm in between the, um, sirens, then I can key the mic up for three seconds and they'll set the sirens off. If I key the mic up and hold it, then I've got a, I've got a selection that I can do. You know, if I've got a hazard spill from a rate, from the railroad track going through or something like that and I need to evacuate, then I can, I can hit the evacuation and, and it can talk and tell you what to do. You know, so there's, there's a lot of options there. So, but I didn't ask them on this new system if that was, if I could do a, a silent test, um, from the cars, so. What was the cost of that, can you remember?
Three thousand something, one hundred?
I, yeah, that sounds right, two or four thousand. That was a private email, was it?
We'll have to.
I believe so.
Next meeting's agenda to vote on.
Yeah. I didn't think it was that expensive, so.
Yeah, that was pretty reasonable, that period.
I was expecting, I was expecting a lot more, but, you know?
Gary, you guys can vote on this special meeting. I thought earlier you was talking about if we needed a vote for you to withdraw.
Oh, we can.
But yes, you can, at this special meeting, you can vote, yeah.
All right.
Cause it, cause that part was advertised.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it was my fault. But if you want to wait, that's fine too.
They have to.
I seen it on paper, but, um, I think you sent it to everybody too.
Yeah, I, I think I just forwarded it to you guys as soon as I got it, so. Let me search ECS. Okay, here it is.
About three thousand twenty-six or something.
No, three thousand one eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
Today is.
Is that that Huela Nee one thousand or something?
Yeah. Six thirteen twenty-five, June thirteenth.
Three thousand one eight hundred and.
Three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Needs a distant control base radio and power supply, external turner must be provided.
So.
External, external, that's.
External computer.
Oh, computer?
External computer, wasn't it?
This says external print must be provided. So it doesn't print it out?
I don't think that thing would be the computer, but. Probably set it up.
Well, that's, that's no big deal because I can hook it into our network. I've got a computer, I've got a computer right there, right below it. If there's, it can go into the network and use the printers that's in the squadron. Send that out to.
Okay.
And if it needs a computer, I can just send it into one of the, uh, desktops that are there. If that can't be done, I can swap out a laptop or something.
Did you have, Gary, uh, I sent it out?
No, I, yeah. Well, John, it doesn't matter, just send it to you.
You know, let's see.
Since you and I was the one talking about it, but I thought I sent it to everyone.
Uh, no, it looks like you sent it to me, I guess.
Do you need a two something?
I'd have looked, I'd have looked a long while for it. There we go. I'm just sending back to you. Do you, uh? I think I have, is there an attachment with it?
Uh, yeah.
I think I got the attachment. I got it.
You did?
Or what? I got something here. I don't know if I got the attachment either.
I can print it off and put it in your guys' box.
That beautiful it is. Thirty-eight eighty?
Oh, I got it from.
Was it attached or not, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah. I had to go back into it, had to go into it and see Kenny's actually looking forward it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, yeah, June ninth, uh, two thousand point five. I, I assume that essence still good?
I assume, I can call Mike and make sure that it is.
I wouldn't think it would.
If it's a couple hundred dollars higher, we just go, even go with it? Okay. Cause who knows these days?
There is, there is a, uh, attachment assigned on their two candidate. In, in the event there is maintenance required, that, uh, there'd be some documentation showing that it's, we've, uh, it was maintained on date and basically what, whether just attach copy to receive or something to it, so we know that. I, I think it's two things in my opinion, that the importance of this. Number one, it's a safety factor for the town of Bloomfield that we can, can ensure that any, to the extent possible that in the event there's severe weather coming, our sirens are working and that, um, uh, we give our citizens as much early warning as possible to protect themselves so that they can seek shelter from whatever. And we approve that they were working at the, at the last.
Exactly.
Safety and liability.
Test, whatever that was.
And, and we have document, we would have documentation showing that we've been doing te- tests on these, uh, quarterly, and we, we, there have, have been no problems, or there were problems and, but we have them fixed, and here's a copy of the receipt, here's and to show the public that we're, we're doing due diligence in providing for their safety as much as we possibly can. Through, through the, through the testing and ensure that they're being maintained and, uh, and they're functioning whenever they need.
We can get advice from Sam on how long we should keep those.
Yeah.
As if, you know, one year, two years, five years, and then throw out.
Yeah, you're still, we're not creating a, a file.
A non, yeah, an unlimited file.
We need to also look and see if, if electronic copies are, are good. If I can have an electronic copy instead of a paper copy.
Sure.
Because if this, if this has to have a computer or something to be, to, to work and all that stuff, and, and you tap into it, you know, in order to use the printer, then I can put those elect- electronic copies of those tests and everything in a file on that computer, so.
I guess that's.
I'd say.
Perfectly fine.
Yeah.
I, I would say, so. We get all of our stuff out of work with all electronic.
Yeah.
Training.
Would this, if, if this, if we pass this, would this be in the form of an ordinance or just, uh?
No, it's just a, it's just a protocol.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd need something for the town to get you passed, a, a ordinance.
Be an ordinance?
Um, the protocol involved.
Yeah, the ordinance doing the, the, that the town passed a, uh, pass this protocol for this siren testing or something like that.
So that, that pretty much explains what this, uh, consists of, it, any other questions that you have with me of this? Um, I would, uh, the more you talk about this, I think once a quarter would be, uh, I would be okay with this being once a quarter.
I agree with Kenny, the repetition can be a deterrent, I guess.
Now, do we need?
Yeah.
I mean, as far as the, like we talk monthly, I, I agree that they.
Yeah.
Might be a little precarious.
Uh, we'll see.
Do we need to put a, do we need to put a clause in there during that day of testing if we have storms not to set them off? As a test? I mean, if we have storms the day that that test is due, then do we want to, do we want to send out that false signal?
Well, I mean, it's.
It's a test, really, because.
It's going to say that this is, this is a test.
Yeah, but if there's a storm, you're not going to hear the talking. I can tell you that, because.
When things are happening and, and just from my, well, my, my example of panics, you know, you have a door lock, you, you don't, nobody's going to know to go to that door lock if there's a fire in the building. They're going to want to push, so you put a panic bar on so they can get out, not have to unlock something.
I just don't want, I just don't want to set it off if we got a storm and I, and then I don't know, you know, if it's just raining and I set it off, then.
Some people want to panic.
Can you, can you have it start, does that kind of automatically go off?
Unless.
Could it be over, sure it could be overrid?
Yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be an override somewhere. That's, that's, that's a question for E C S, I can, I can talk to Mike and see, but, you know.
But yeah, I would, I would think if there's definitely storms, severe storms in the forecast, that you would not want the test to go off.
Okay.
Just, just.
So if we.
Mike, just put a clause in there if there's severe weather in the area that the test will not be, uh, conducted.
Minus, uh, severe weather uh, at the time of of the scheduled test. I don't know why you motion on that. But, uh, before you do, I, I want to read this. Both sirens will be tested at twelve P M. on the first Tuesday of each quarter by the Bloomfield Police Department, minus severe weather, uh, at the time of the scheduled test. And then, we, we haven't discussed, or we didn't finalize, the March test will be conducted during the National Weather, uh, State Tornado Drill. Uh, they normally, I, I think this first Tuesday, that's whenever they do their test as well, the first Tuesday in March is when they do their test. Because it says the March test will be conducted during the N W S.
And that's what we're doing at the first Tuesday. I, I would say we do that, because that's probably the one time mo- the most, I wouldn't say most, the most people are aware of something's.
Right.
Something's going on, yeah. Something's going to happen, because I read it.
Because the news, the news states that it is going to be in, in all that stuff.
Facebook, something like that, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and this is, the sirens will be tested by both Green County Dispatch with their equipment and by Bloomfield Police Department. Now, I know the sheriff wants, he wants our dispatches to be able to test their equipment, too. And so, I'm not sure.
They won't be able to.
If.
They won't be able to, because all they've got to, the capability of doing is a live tornado warning.
Okay, so, I guess we can take that.
The sheriff's department, all the sheriff's department is there for, John, is a backup for us. It's, it's, they don't have control over our sirens or anything, they're a backup for us. If we are busy, or we're doing something, you know, and can't get there to, can't get in between the sirens to set them off, then they are a backup. That's, that's the only reason that they, they have got access to these. Because all the chiefs got together and decided, yeah, we need a backup in case something happens, in case power goes out at the town hall or something like that, then they've got a backup to set these sirens off. But the only thing that they can do is live tornado.
Do they have capabilities in other towns, too?
They've got the whole county, yeah.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, he wants, he wants to do this so that he knows in the event that his, he has to, uh, set it, uh, set them off from his dispatch, that they're working. So, uh, we can take this, we'll just take that line out and I'll let him know that right now, uh.
He needs to spend the money and that.
He's going to have to fix his, and once he has, then we can, we can do an amendment to this and bring it back in.
Suppose the upgrade for them would be similar to ours? Or, or be born down?
They're covering multiple towns.
Well, it's, it's, it's the same system, but it is their radio console. So, um, and, and they're, they're dispatched off computers now, since we went to Spilman and Ken and everything, so they've got all the little push buttons on their, on their punch screens. Um, so it'll be a software upgrade for him, but I don't, you know, towards re- probably towards regrant, at least, because software, I mean, software's not not inexpensive, that's for sure.
I mean, again, it's not, it's pretty inexpensive for the town, or for county.
It is, it is, but, you know, that, that's a, that's a George's thing, if he wants to spend that money to do it. You know, because he's just a, he's just a backup for us, if we can't get to it.
Yeah, yeah, this, this is our responsibility first, because we own the sirens.
Right.
And if he's a backup, then if the parts don't work and his doesn't, then that's on him. Uh, but we will be able to explain why ours didn't work.
And I guess if they get to, get an upgrade, then we'd be willing to.
Put them back in and let them participate.
Yes, wouldn't we?
Yeah, but, but, that, and, and I'm talking about stuff that I don't know about this new console. Um, you know, are they going to be able to do a, a live test, um, with our sirens, or are they going to be, be able to do a silent test with our sirens, just to say that their equipment works? You know, that basically what I'm doing every week? You know, I don't know, but see, if, if that program, the new console, if it's programmed to do it every Tuesday or quarter, at noon, alright? When is the sheriff's department going to test theirs? Are they going to do it directly after ours? You know, so you're going to do two rounds of siren tests, you know, that Tuesday if they do a live test. So personally, they don't need to do a live test.
No, they're just a backup.
They need to do electronic tests to make sure that their stuff works, you know?
So, let's just take that line out of it and, and I'll have that conversation with George, and then he can decide what he wants to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so. Other than that, I think we've pretty well covered. Uh, both sirens will be tested during the statewide tornado drill, I think we do that now whenever we test them on the state drill. Uh, so. That's.
We have a state drill and a national?
Well, it's.
It's the only same thing.
Same thing. It's put out by National Weather Service, but it's statewide.
Actually, this says the March test will be conducted during the National Weather State Tornado Drill.
Cause though.
It's national, dictated by each state because of different times on Easter, or off, it, there, whatever.
Okay.
So does this need to be written up as an ordinance, then we approve it?
It'd be alright.
Okay. I'll, I'll get this direct up and get it to you, Sondra.
Sondra, didn't you know the ordinance?
I couldn't.
Okay, so.
Do we want to prove that upgrade?
I believe so, but that's.
Oh, yeah, they did it. We're going to have, we're going to need to prove that.
The beginning of things here.
So, do we, I guess we need to file a motion? I would make a motion that we approve the quote that we received from, uh, uh, E C S Electronic Communication System, uh, for the amount of three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars in order to allow, uh, our police department to do a quarterly siren, uh, test for the alert system.
All circular.
John made a motion to approve the, uh, three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for the upgrade of the E C S unit, Dave seconded it on favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed, there is here a pass for the purchasing of this system.
That was dated June ninth, so I'm sure that still should have been good.
I just, I just messaged him to make sure that it's still good.
Alright, on to our next, uh, final agenda on the list is disaster planning. Now, turn it over to John.
Okay. Uh, did you guys got a, a bit copy of this?
I need a copy of it, please.
You got one there, didn't you?
Yeah.
So, this, uh, I think this complies with what's called the N I M S, National Incident Management System, that in the event of a, uh, it doesn't have to be a catastrophic accident, it's in the event of a plane deriva- plane derailment, train derailment, or even if there's a fire or an accident, whoever's at the scene, there, there's a, at the site, there's an incident command setup. This, what this plan calls for, that in the event that Bloom, the town of Bloomfield was to have a catastrophe here in town, say a tornado ripped right through downtown Bloomfield, or one, one, anywhere within the Bloomfield district, and we have a catastrophic type disaster, then what does the council need to do in order to, uh, support the, the town of Bloomfield in order to?
I got one, one thought. I think I would almost take the word catastrophic out.
Okay. Doesn't have to be catastrophic, good point.
Disaster.
Yes, a disaster, because we've had, we've had, uh, we've had disasters. So, in, so in the event that we have a disaster here, then what does the council need to do in order to be able to provide the necessary resources, uh, for the citizens that's affected by it? And I think thing number one is, the council would need to assemble as quickly as possible. Uh, you know, if your family is involved, uh, impacted by this disaster, you need to take care of your family first, but then come to the town. Uh, there would be three places that we would possibly meet in order to, uh, do what we need to do. The first priority would be to come to the town hall, not so much to, uh, fire department, but to the two town hall, because there are more communication resources in the town hall than we have anyplace else. But let's say this disaster impacted the town hall, we can't get there. Our second place would be here at the fire department, and if, if it's not here, then we could go to the, uh, our, the community center, Bloomfield Community Center, we're, uh, up at the pool. And then those, the people, who needs to be there? Well, uh, that would be paragraph two, which should, would be the council president, and, uh, we would then, also, that the, both of us, the other two councilmen would also be located. We'd come there, I'm not.
Our town attorney's not going to be there, he lives in Wilmington, he's going to be concerned probably with what's going on in Wilmington.
Okay.
There's, there's.
He's the town attorney for a lot of other towns.
There's no need for the attorney to be there.
Oh, yes, there is, oh, yes, there is, and if, if we make decisions on, uh, to do something that we, we shouldn't be doing, uh, he needs to be able to, uh, steer us in the right direction, because.
Well, he's not going to be there, I can tell you.
Well, but, it, it would be incumbent for us to be able to communicate with him.
I think we need to give it up to our, our chief of police and the county, just in the fire department, to do their jobs, and we stay and support them, we don't make all the decisions, we let them do what they were trained for, we're not trained to do any of these things, uh, going through some of the special classes that you can train them to go through. That's just my standpoint.
And, and I, I couldn't agree more, I, I agree with what you're saying, that, that's why I think, uh, our town marshal and our fire department and the street department chief need to be co-located with, with the council, and then they would dispatch, how, whoever they need. You, you know, he may, Ken may need all the police departments come on, you know, uh, everybody comes, or he may just need one or two, but he would, based off what the situation, the information would be coming into the town hall as to, uh, what the situation is. Uh, the street department, Jason would come, just, do we need all, all hands on deck with the street department? We don't know, uh, it'd be based off what the situation.
Of course, they won't stay in this meeting, because.
They wouldn't need to, but they would be coming and going as well, but they would be our eyes and ears out there as to what's, what's going on. Uh, the fire department chief, do we need, does he, is it bad enough, do we need all the fire department, uh, people to come on?
They're going to be there.
Do we want to say the town attorney by phone if possible? Would we want to say that?
Yeah.
He's not going to be.
He's not going to be. He's not going to tell you if that will.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Cause he's not going to drive over here.
No, he, he's not going to be here, we, we, I've been through two tornadoes and, and the attorneys never showed up, so.
So, that, the key thing would be for us to initially get, give them a huddle with the three of us, with Sondra, with, uh, police department chief, the, uh, street, Jason, and, uh, Andy, to say, okay, let's. the Street, Jason, and Andy, to say, okay, let's get an idea of what the extent of the disaster is that, that had.
Again, going back, I started this thought after what appeared to be, and again, all I know is what I read. And if half of what I read was true, there was kinda some mass discommunication or mass no communication, it seemed like with the Linton, Linton deal. Again, don't know how much of that, what I read was true, but that's why we're doing something.
We're considering trying to put something together.
And I don't know if you agree with that, with the whole Linton deal over there, but it just seemed like.
There was a command post set up. For what I'm concerned, you have too many chiefs in the, in the, in there and not enough Indians in this stuff. That's why, that's why the help went elsewhere. And the Fire Department did respond, there was no direction, and they said, heck with it. Ain't gonna tell us what to do, what's going on. So, you know, I sent my guys to Linton and had them work their way back this way. Doing the county roads and checking lines down, treating down homes, whatever. So, you know, there was, there was a command center and everything was set up and according to NIMS, it was alright. NIMS is basically the dag on government getting involved after nine eleven and screwing things up.
Ken, he's really proving my, my point, my saying the importance of, you said you sent your police, your guys to Linton and moving forward. It would be the exact same thing we would want Ken to do in the town of Bloomfield, wherever the disaster is. We, he would send his people where they need to go. We, we wouldn't need, it wouldn't be us doing that, it would be Ken sending his people based off of the situation. Jason would be doing the same thing. If Jason's out trying to fix something that's broken and we're getting all this information in from other places where we've got water leaks, we've got gas lines, we've got this, we've got that, and he's over here. If he, he's got phone numbers of people he, he could call to help if we need additional resources. That's the value of us being able to make decisions collectively by the staff that we have and within each one of the department. There's people that we need to, we would need to be communicating with as well. Again, this is just my initial thought on this. The council president would be talking to the county sheriff, he would be talking to the emergency manager here in the county, trying to give them an update. Here's what we know, we have right now. The, we need to be contacting Red Cross if we need, someone needs to call in. County health nurse.
But that stuff, John, is, is not the council's responsibility. That stuff is our responsibility and we notify dispatch and dispatch makes our phone calls on who we need and where. That's, that's not a decision.
Water lines and gas lines.
That's not a decision that the council's making, that's a decision that we're making out in the field. The, the, basically, the, the council, the way NIMS works, the council has my bosses and has the money people. Okay? You guys need to, you guys need to be over here. The command center's gonna be here. If we need something that's gonna cost money or cost resources from the town, then I make a phone call to you and say, hey, this is what I need. Can you contact, just like the last tornado went through? I don't know who the, who was on the council, but we've contacted one of the council and they called the mayor in Linton and Linton sent back those and stuff over here to help me and Donnie clear the roads. And, and his workers, you know, we didn't.
Two thousand, eight.
Yeah, we didn't call the, we didn't call the mayor. We called whoever the council member was and the council member talked to the mayor and done that. That's what your guys' position is on. If it's gonna cost funds, if it's gonna cost overtime, or if we need equipment, then you guys can get it with your contacts from other municipalities. You know? But as far as the decision making stuff, that falls on me and Randy. And if it goes south, it's, it's our heads, just like with Roger. It went south because Roger didn't do the job. And with NIMS, you guys are, you guys are the money people and, and I come to you and say, hey, I need this, this, and this. Do you know where I can get it? And no? Well, can we rent it? Yeah, go ahead and rent it. Okay? That's a decision that, that the council needs to make and Sondra needs to make that, you know, are okay or whatever. That, that I'm spending funds for this, you know? And then, then the ball gets thrown with Homeland Security and all that stuff and the disaster relief and then we get paid back and, you know, all that stuff. And that's, that's well above my.
They initially say, we don't have money to help clean up, like our, is that the council?
Yep.
And then, lo and behold.
They have money.
Three or four weeks later, they come up to a hundred fifty thousand.
Yes. I mean, that's, that's what you guys are to me when, when something happens. Okay? I mean, you guys, cause I'm not gonna go out here and spend twenty thousand dollars, you know, to get some, without somebody's approval. That's, that's your guys', you know, your guys are the ones that's gonna say, yeah, go ahead and do it. No, no, no. NIMS is, NIMS is great. Government got involved in it, NIMS come out in, after nine eleven. Because nine eleven, it's all New York City, they got there and they couldn't communicate with each other, plain and simple. So, the federal government threw a whole bunch of money and we bought all these radios and stuff that I can talk from here to New York. I don't need to talk to New York. I need to talk to dispatch from standing out in front of town hall, but some days I can, some days I can't.
Communication, that's one of my agendas here, or my, not agenda, but one of my concerns is radio between police departments. I know you guys can't communicate with state police unless it's through, unless it's through dispatch probably. So, communication has to be key there on any situation.
Yeah, that's just like when the tornado was, I was down there on one fifty seven, just past White's Farm, or right there at Pioneer, just past the road there. And I'm turning people around and sending them back. I had a trooper over here on sixty seven that was sending them across to go, to go, I said, you can't go this way. You got power lines across the highway. And Matt Miller, that owns the lighthouse, he'd come by. I said, hey, would you tell whoever that is over there, not send people this way? So he went, he drove over there and told them, and it was a truth. We had no idea he was over there. You know? But, but with, with NIMS, I, I sent you, this is what, what we come up with with Lexa Poll and stuff.
Emergency operations plan?
These are, these are our plans for the police department and our procedures. This is what's going to be done. Now, you can keep these, but this is not gonna say if something happens, that these are gonna be what we're going by. Because these are all fluid and they change all the time. I usually get twelve to fifteen updates or changes a week on our operating procedures. From case law or, or whatever, but, but we are following this and this follows NIMS. It also has you guys involved. But my emergency operation plan is gonna be different from Randy's. And Jason, he doesn't need one. He'll go with the town and this, this is great for a town because it's vague enough and it doesn't, doesn't paint Ken to any corners, you know? But this is what we will go by as, with our department. And this is what the guys are, you know, studying on and are familiar with and, and it follows NIMS. But with you guys in the command center, I don't know, I need all of you there or not.
Well, we, we don't, we don't know that either at the time. The, the.
It just depends.
The part I'm trying to make here, with this plan here, is for the initial, once the disaster has gone through, then what, what can we as a council do to try to get, to establish law and order? To, to try to get things repaired as quickly as possible? And what, the purpose of this is for us to agree to assemble and that we have the people that identified here to assemble with us. And then we make an assessment based off of the situation at hand that that, once we know what the situation is, we would then decide whether we need, is it the police department we need, is it the Street Department, is it the Fire Department? What do we need? And then we can, we can go from there. It's all, I can't, we don't know what the situation's gonna be. So we don't know what we're gonna need until we can identify what it is that's happened. And that's, that's what this does. It gets us in the same room together so we can add, get the same information at the same time and then make decisions based off what the situation is.
But John.
We have two different goals.
What is it? Go ahead.
We have two different goals here. We all get in the room together. We either, people wanting to do something to the town. The sheriff's gonna have a whole different outlook because he's covering a whole county. I'm not gonna be a flea in someone's ear stopping them from doing their job, you know, slowing them up or whatever.
The sheriff's not here.
No, he is down here. And he's doing something, you know, just like going to ER room, you're great in the ER. You're a great man, was right all the way there, but once you get in the ER room, let them do their job. They're gonna tell you that.
But John, by the time, number one, county council wasn't even contacted until we had things under control. Might've been on, on the phone, but they wasn't contacted until we already had, had guys out there and, and started assessing the situation on how bad it was when this last tornado came through. So, with this, it's great on paper, but if I'm out here, just like the, the last tornado that hit Bloomfield, you know? Donnie and I were, were talking on what we needed and the Fire Chief, I think it was Chris at that time, was talking on, on what we needed. I'm not gonna wait to have a meeting with everybody before I call my guys out. If something happens, I'm already on the phone telling the guys to get here. And then once they get here, or while they're on the way, I'm gonna be on Spillman and telling them where to go and what I need done. Because I'm not a big department, I'm a small department, so is Fire Department. Fire Department's a small department. And I'm not gonna come out of the field to have a meeting and talk to the press and, and all that BS because I got stuff to do. You know, so I've got to be out there. The sheriff, as soon as that tornado hit Linton, the sheriff was on, on the radio and he was on the way over there. He is not stopping to talk to his councilman and, and all that stuff. He's going over there because we have a job to do. Once we get the situation assessed and kind of find out a little bit on what we need, then I'm gonna call you and say, hey, I need this, this, and this.
Who, who you gonna call?
You guys.
Which ones?
It doesn't matter to me. I'm gonna call one of them.
And how are we gonna be able to make a decision? If we're not collecting, if we're not in at one built location and you call Gary, then, you know.
Well, I figure it this way. If you guys can't have each other's back in a situation like that and Gary make a decision and say, hey, I need back those or I need to spend five thousand dollars to get something over here or whatever, and you guys don't support him, that's between you guys.
Meanwhile, Jason's on the other phone calling, hey, we, we need, I need some, someone over here with heavy equipment.
But, but ninety, ninety-nine percent of the time, John, Jason's calling me, I'm calling the Fire Department, we're all three talking. You know, that's, that's how it was on this last tornado that went through. You know, we, we were all, we were all talking. We had, I wasn't talking, you know, I had a supervisor that I was calling. Or one of the guys out there that I knew, hey, this is what's going on. And me and Donnie and, and Chris.
All this is, is, it's a, it's not to try to micromanage your department or Jason's department or the Fire Department at all.
Right, it's, it's.
Everybody's gotta be on the same page.
We, it's, it's a ability for us to get, collect information at a point whenever the town has experienced a disaster and we can make decisions on how we can help or talk. That, that's all this is, it's not. And so, I just present it and for you guys to consider, if we, if it's not what we think we wanna do, then we won't, we won't pass it.
I think the, the town is required to have a disaster plan. I'm almost, I am almost certain that the town is required to have a disaster plan. You know, and it's just like with mine. Our protocols and our operating, operating plan and everything else references the town's disaster plan in our procedures. We're gonna, we're gonna go with this through our procedures. But I am.
What would you consider our, our ca- our town disaster plan to be at this point in time, Dan?
We don't have one. That's why I went this way. Not that I know of. If it is, I've never seen it.
I mean, if that's, if that's what your present, you're going by, I guess that's what our, that's what our present plan is.
Well, that's, that's our, our, our police department's plan, you know? I mean, that's.
That's basically our plan.
That's, that's what I'm going by. Um, as far as emergency management, stuff like that, that is on, on two oh nine. And it follows the NIMS, it's Managed Operation Planning Logistics Administration. That's, that's NIMS.
I'm, I'm thinking back to two thousand and eight. That was at head of the evening. Nine o'clock. Dark, is all I remember. Oh.
I know that I had.
I'm trying to remember what went on as far as was, did somebody, somebody with, I'll say authority come by and, hey, you, you've got damage? Major damage, it looks like. Are you alright? The answer's no. So, is that something we wanna look at? Well, I. Now, it's gonna take a while to know that, but within, within a few hours, I can see there's six or eight houses. Which is kinda what this was, major damage.
Yeah.
Has somebody approached them and talked to them?
That is, that is more, more often than not, fire personnel. Fire personnel does the, does the first assessment of, of damage. Because the phone calls that are gonna be made, or that were made in oh eight, when, was Duke, RNC, the gas company, because we had all three of them there. The only one that was up at the town hall was one of councilmen, I believe. And Donnie and I, Donnie and I come up there and was looking at the map to see what areas to go in, then Senator Fire Jeremy Emmon come in and he brought his guys and his equipment and, and stopped in and asked, where do you want us? And we sent them, you know, the, we sent two or three fire departments, different areas in town, to walk back, to come back this way, check on the damage, check in the house there.
My point is.
Send it.
I don't think, again, I can't say a hundred percent, but I don't think anyone with authority approached myself or Dan, everybody alright, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. I don't know, because we was trying to get the guy out of the house there, well, crossing Dairy Queen parking lot now.
Yeah, because.
Because he just, yeah, and, and he wasn't leaving his house until his wife got there. And we had to get his wife out of traffic on two thirty-one to get down there so he could come out of the house. But I mean, his, his house just fell down around him, other than him sitting in the recliner. But I mean, that is, health and safety, that, that is the, the main focus of us in the fire department when, when something happened. So, you know, I'll be available on phone or on radio or, or to dispatch, but, you know, my department's small enough that, that I gotta be out there. You know, I, I, I don't have time to.
Well, morality, morality is different for this. I mean, I understand some of that, I understand when you have a disaster plan and meeting and things like that. But this work great in big cities, but not small towns.
No, we just need to be able to communicate, whether it's by cell or whether we have a, a actual command center or whatever. Now, once that, once that first assessment has been done, then absolutely. You can meet a command center and I can inform you guys, we've got damage here, here and here. RNC's out, Duke's out, you know, Midwest Gas is out. We've got broken water, we've got, you know, whatever it, it might be.
So maybe that needs to be.
But.
The second step instead of what the way of presently is, maybe the second step is. The police and fire department will make initial assessment.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we can.
We can actually go around and around, I'll say wards, you know, and check out.
And then we can meet with you and say, hey, this is, this is what we've got. Because at that time, after that initial assessment, then I can come in, then, then Jason can come in or, or, you know, the Midwest Gas representative or RMC or Duke. We can all get there because, and we can do the assessment, we can let you guys know. Because the next thing that's gonna be down here is newsies and I'm not talking to the newsies when I got stuff to do. You know, that's, that's your guys' job. You can do that assessment, you know, and, and say, yeah, we've been hit by a tornado and, you know, we've got guys out here working to clear the roads and, and, you know, keep away from downed power lines and, and all this stuff. It's not the oh eight one, but the other one, I had channel ten in the car with me. I took them, cause they wanted to tour the, the area that got hit. And I took them around after we got the roads cleared and, and the power lines shut down and stuff like that.
When was that?
The one before, the one that hit your house. Cause we had two back to back that hit Bloomfield. One of them was just north of town and then one of them come in through, through your house. And I can't remember if it was before, I think it was before the one that hit your house.
That north one, was that the one that went over the market though, or was that?
Cause the one that hit our house actually went through the town. It hit a spot or two.
Yeah.
One fifty-seven.
Yeah. But there was. There was, there was two of them, I mean, just back to back. But, you know, we gotta do the emergency assessment first, the initial one and, and then we can, then we can do this. Um, cause that's basically what, what our plan is. On our departmental responsibilities and activate an emergency operation plan. And it's, it is vague enough and that's how Lexible does things, not to paint you in a corner. So basically, it's just a, it's just a guideline. But all the guys have gotta be NIMS certified. I've gotta get Ryan into, uh, NIMS seven hundred and eight hundred to get him certified as a, as a command structure.
I mean, this, this, two hundred and two point two point one. It says emergency management organization has been established by the town of Bloomfield. This ordinance has been approved by town council and it gives the ordinance number. Or I assume that's the ordinance number.
Where you at?
Two hundred, first page, point two, point one. Bloomfield codes and ordinances.
Rule two.
I'd be interested to see what that says. It says we have something.
Is that it?
I see whatever that symbol is, ten dash fourteen dash three dash seventeen, is that it?
That is the requirement, that's Indiana code.
Okay.
That is the requirement of the emergency management plan.
So that's, that's what this is then?
Right.
So we have something somewhere then, right?
Well, no, that's the.
That's Indiana, that's Indiana code.
It says that, that we have an emergency management organization established by the town of Bloomfield. That's what I'm saying. So whether we do or whether that was just verbiage.
That might just be verbiage that they put in for the courts.
Yeah. We need to, we need to find out what that says.
We need to find out it what or if.
Yeah, who's the organization that?
Because see, the fire department will have an emergency operations plan also.
And that's what we're trying to do here, is trying to come up with a plan on what to do. This says here, Kenny, you're supposed to, in the, upon activation of the plan, the town marshal or authority designated should contact Indian Department of Homeland Security to assist with mutual aid response from local, state and federal force. Which again, this is what this plan was called for, that we need to start contacting these different agency. In, in the event that we need to, it, you know, it may, it may not be that big of a disaster, but it may be, it could be catastrophic. That's, that's all I'm trying to do with this is to establish, identify this, what the disaster is and what do we need to do in order to resolve the issue.
Do they, does the homeland security or anything like that, FEMA or, or Red Cross, do they have to assess the situation before they can deem it a like, a thing where they can.
Yes, that is, that is done by the council.
So this has gotta happen after the disaster.
Yeah, it's, it's all after the fact. All that stuff, the reimbursement of the money that you spend and all that stuff.
You take care of it. That's not what that, this is upon activation of the plan, the town marshal or his, his, his contact Indian department, the mutual aid response.
Right, and John, I'm telling you, that is after, that is after, that is after the fact.
Well, after we, after we've assessed the situation here locally, then you, cause you need to be able to get on the phone and talk to whoever this, um, IDHS guy, person is and say, hey, this is what's happened here. We've got, we've got people, we've got, you know, mass casualties, we've got, uh, all kinds of issues going on and we need help. And then they'll, they'll get their wheels rolling, they'll get someone down here as well. That's, it, it's a matter of communication to the agencies that, that can do what they need to do in an, in the event of an emergency. You know, just like down in Texas, all these flooding that's taking place, you know, FEMA is, they've gotten all kinds of, uh, criticisms for how late they were in getting down there and responding and providing resources to the victims down there.
FEMA's always late on everything.
Well.
And it doesn't matter when you call them. There's, there's, there's too much bureaucracy involved in, in this.
So this is good, well, like. And that, yeah, in that situation, have they truly, were they truly late?
Well, you know, there, there, you've got more people on the ground as far as first responders and stuff like that before FEMA even steps on the ground. You know, we're sixty percent done before FEMA gets down.
Your locals are gonna be there first.
Your, your, your local people are gonna do the, you know, whether it's citizens or whether it's first responders or, or whatever. Sixty percent of the stuff's done before the federal government ever steps foot down there. And, you know, when the governor comes down and tours the site for his, for his publicity or whatever, or the president or whoever, all the stuff's gotta stop. So they're not, they're not, they're not helping the situation, they're hindering it. You know, because anytime the politicians arrive, you know, everything's gotta stop.
Yeah, but people like that, they have to.
You know.
They have to show up within.
They do.
Within a few days.
They're gonna be criticized.
Yeah, one initially, I don't know how quick the governor was there, the president was there a week later.
Yeah.
Governor was probably there two or three days earlier.
You know, so by, by that time, you know, you, you've switched from a search to a recovery, basically. You know, and, and you're just.
You're out of the emergency.
Right.
The emergency is.
Emergency's done, now you, now you gotta look at housing and, and, you know, necessities. And that's where FEMA and homeland security and, uh, your EMA directors and stuff get, get involved and, and, you know. We'll be working with Kenny, EMA director, um, regarding this. And, you know, they'll have a, they'll have a protocol and stuff to go through for their EMA plan. But at the minimum, we've gotta have an outline like John's got. I mean, at the minimum, to go by.
Just to say we.
And it needs, and it needs to be, it needs to be as vague as it can be. You know, so it doesn't paint you in a corner and it, and it, you know. I know in it, for you guys to make a decision, it takes two EMA and a meeting and all that stuff. But in situations like that, me or Randy or, or Jason or, or ought to be able to call you guys and say, hey, this is what I need. And you say yes and the other two, you know, or have your back on it. Because it, it's not, it's not a time for politics and, and stuff.
Right.
You know what I mean?
No, all these people down here, the county sheriff department, the county commissioner, uh, emergency manager, county health nurse. If there's a disaster, they're, they're gonna wanna know, uh, what's, what's going on, what's, uh, if we need additional resources or not. And, and that, that's really the, the basis for this. I think Kenny said. When the disaster has occurred and then the immediate response is he's gonna request that. Those needs.
Right.
These would be folks, I'll say it's second line, I guess, not, not initial. Some of these, maybe you would be able to.
Right. Right, because like on a house fire or something like that in the wintertime. Um, I'm not gonna call you and say, hey, we need to go, we need to contact Red Cross for these people. I'm gonna call dispatch, dispatch is gonna call them and they're gonna be en route while we're still working the fire. You know, they're, they're gonna be on scene. Uh, you know, this stuff, this stuff here, we rely heavily on, on our dispatch. We need these people called and dispatch has done this enough that they know, you know? We have an accident with a power line down, they've already got Duke or RNC on the way prior to dispatching officers.
Also, it's, uh, it's a line of communications recorded. If, if, uh, we ever come back, what did you call these and I called myself, do you have record of that? We're not gonna have record, we're gonna have recordings, dispatch will have that and they'll have it all recorded.
Right. I mean, if something happened, it's, you're, you're gonna have a whole bunch of agencies with a whole bunch of different emergency operation plan, uh, how they handle things. It's all gonna be integrated into NIMS, but I don't follow NIMS a hundred percent. Because NIMS is, I don't have two hundred officers, you know, I've got four. And so there's parts of NIMS that looks great on paper, that are not, they're not, they're not usable to me, they're, they're useless, you know? So when we do a disaster plan for the, for the town by ordinance or however you guys do it. Or, you know, get with Randy and see what he's got for the fire department, we can compare or whatever. But the plan for the town in order to. Kinda relieve the liability, needs to be as vague as it can be. And then, you know, my plan goes into place for my department, Randy's plan goes into place, but we all kinda follow whatever the town's got. You know? And it's all communication with, with you guys because you guys are, are the money people. If I need stuff or Jason needs stuff or Randy needs stuff, you know? And, and we've all got MOUs with all the other departments, so the departments are going to call me and say, hey, what do you need?
That's, that's a good point in that, uh, you know, if we are, someone, we, we have to be aware of resources that we're using. Cause we have limited funds ourselves that, uh, we have to be concerned with. Uh, do we need all the, uh, all the police department, do we need all, everyone, uh, called up? Or is it some, you know, those type of decisions, do we need more heavy equipment? Uh, cause, uh, that's all gonna have a bill attached to it. Those type of things, uh, need to be, uh, decided on, I think, from the council.
But Linton come over, Linton didn't charge us, did he?
I don't know, no agency states.
You know, cause I, we con, I think Donnie contacted one of the councilmen and they, they made a call to the mayor and the mayor sent his employees and his equipment over here to help us. You know, there wasn't, there wasn't a bill, I mean, that was, that was just neighbor helping neighbor. And that's what you get a lot of this in these rural counties. You know? Jeremy come down and, and he had, he had gators, he had his fire truck, he had his search and rescue vehicle and everything else and come in and hollered at me on the radio, what do you need, where do you need us? You know? And, I mean.
I'll go back to two thousand and eight.
Those guys know their job.
I mean, every tree was blown down. I don't remember now if there was a power line out of the street, but I don't think they were down, I don't think. Probably the line was down between us and Medina Power. We had, we had friends come over that evening or that immediate, or within an hour, maybe hour and a half. Uh, decided we couldn't stay there, so we ended up, I got old Eric, he was down in Florida and we stayed at his place, actually stayed there a week. Next morning, got up, headed to the house and you're just standing there thinking, what the hell am I doing?
Right.
First guy walks, walks up the sidewalk, John Combs with his chainsaw. I can't remember, I don't know, five, six trees down front and back. Where do I start?
Yeah.
Alan, Alan Pickett, Alan Pickett showed up with his dumper dump truck, he hauled it.
Yeah. And I mean.
All volunteer, I mean, he hauls.
Yeah, we had a lot of guys calling me and Donnie, uh, you know, where do you need us? And they were, they were just people, I mean, just coming to help, you know? Linton had the same thing over there, you know?
Yeah, they, they're a lot of volunteers that show up and wanna help.
And it's the time, and it's the timing of things because you don't want people showing up right, right at the beginning of, cause you know, it says things.
We gotta get everything safe first.
They can be away.
We gotta get the power shut down, we gotta get the lines up, wait, everything else.
They can be more prepared, they can.
Other than the residents, you know, the people that live there, I, you know, I can say, hey, stay, stay away from lines, you know, all this stuff, but you're worried about your property. And we understand that, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you to, you know, leave your house or anything like that. But we gotta do the initial assessment and then after that assessment, then we get over to you guys and say, hey, this is, this is what we need. Because I'm gonna need things that are different. Because I'm gonna need things that are different from what Jason needs. And Randy's gonna need things from you that are different from what I need, you know, because we've got, we've got three different departments. We do, we do different things. So, but we do need to come up with a plan if there is not one. But like I said, it needs to be as, as vague as can be. And I can contact, uh, Jake over at Burlington, or, or Vanon, or Lyons, or Jasonville, and see what their plans are.
Linton, checkers Linton.
Check with Linton.
They probably would have a little, little more information than the other two, maybe, maybe not.
You know, cause they've got, they've got their own utilities, you know, so, uh, and they've got their own dispatch, so. You know, I can get it for you, and I think that's, we, it needs one, we're required by statute to have one. But I think everybody just, um.
Linton, Linton's probably very little bit since they have their own dispatch too.
Latched onto Roger, and he's the EMA director for the county, and everybody just, you know, latched onto him, but, and Roger was knowledgeable. He, I mean, if you had something, he had a phone number to call. Uh, but he never, he didn't initiate the, the plan when the gas blow caught on fire over by my near. You know, we were evacuating, he didn't, he didn't do nothing, went to McDonald's, got hamburgers for everybody. You know?
Yeah, I forgot about that, I think we had, we had, we had to close the plant for a, a day, I think.
Yeah.
Right, the command center was at the plant.
Yeah.
Down at the Husserd mother.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot all about that.
And the command center there, you know, we notified the gas company, the gas company notified the guys that, that, I don't know, they got a special name, but the guys go in there and put that fire out. It wasn't us, we was decoration at that point, because that was, that was way above what we did.
Who, who was in it, do you remember who was in the command center?
Roger was at that time.
Yeah. I don't remember, the sheriff.
You know, the sheriff, sheriff was, uh, sheriff was Mike.
Mike.
It was either Mike or Pierce.
Yeah. Or who, Pierce.
Pierce.
Yeah, I can't remember for sure.
It's one of those two, and then.
I remember, there would all, there would've been somebody.
The gas people was there.
Yeah.
Um, electric was there.
Somebody from the state sheriff or somewhere.
State Homeland Security was there.
Yeah.
But there's no, no fence showed up. And then the public information officer met them at the lighthouse. And that's where the, that's where the newspapers and stuff was, you know, was, uh, informed of what was going on. You know, but at that time, after, after we got the evacuation done, we were decoration there. You know, blocking off roads and all that stuff, state highway was notified, you know? But as far as, as far as plans, most of these people that's gonna be notified or need to be notified, I'm going to do, or Randy's gonna do, when we're doing our assessment. Or dispatch is already done by the time they, they get us, everybody's sent there. Those initial phone calls are already gonna be made, to your utilities, to your other fire department and stuff.
I'd say, get those examples of those other towns, and we can massage that aside when we need to.
Okay.
Then we'll have something that satisfies everybody, and that'll be good for them.
And we need to pull up this ordinance here, but see what's already ordered.
That's not an ordinance, that's ID code.
It's an Indiana code. It just says that we will have one, not what.
It says, that's the code that says you'll have one, that's not.
This is a, it was, an emergency organization has been established by the town of Bloomfield. This ordinance has been approved by the town.
Well.
Right, it is an ordinance, but it's.
We, we just, we need to follow through and get it, because we, it may have been approved, but, or has been established, but we need to establish one and get it.
We don't think we actually have established one.
I'll have to look, I, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, so, I'll have to look.
Okay.
Okay, it is ordered.
Good discussion.
A lot of points, so.
Okay, real quick. Phone systems. App.
Are we gonna, uh, once the journalist meeting, right? We're gonna adjourn a meeting, then we can.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Make a motion, will we adjourn?
A second.
Alright, I'll say aye.
Aye.